There you go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we are calling to the order of the Citro zoning board of fields Thursday, May 16th, 2024 meeting in select board here in town hall. Citro zoning board field is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We have all members can interact in a polite manner. Even though there is disagreement, we value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginal law and minority test communities, feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards, support and respect our community. The Citro zoning board of fields meets in person and via Zoom currently. All meetings are recorded and can be viewed on Citro Community Television, Facebook Live. And recorded meetings are available to follow on date on Comcast Channel 9 and YouTube. With that, we will hear the first application of Atlantic Coast Engineering on behalf of their clients Israel Adler and Nicholas Sobel, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Sections 8, 10, and 6, 10 of Citro zoning bylaw, and/or any other relief to the board of field make grant to allow the construction of an addition with pre-existing non-conformant senior family dwellings or for Avenue. Do we have anybody here on that? There's nobody here on the first application.
No.
Anybody on Zoom?
If you are here on Zoom for that application, just raise your hand. We can unmute.
Or for Avenue.
You have no hands raised.
I have no hands. Well, since there is no one here on that application.
Mr. X, I'm sorry. Let me, let me, let me do a quick little update here. A I Adler, can you just identify yourselves?
Ah, there we go.
Yeah, sorry. That's Israel Adler. Sorry, I was trying to figure out how to raise my hand.
There you go.
Okay. Nice to see you, Mr. Adler. Why don't you run us through your proposed project?
So I believe we're looking to do an eight hundreds, eight hundred and fifteen square foot addition to the front part of the house. Um, so it will stay the existing footprint and then just an addition on the top, on the front part of the house. The current house is thirteen hundred square feet. There's a back part of it. So it's just going to be the front part.
So again, I'm just trying to understand it a little bit better. Um, it's only a second floor addition? Or is there a bump out as well?
So on the, in the current draw, drawings that are that you were looking at on the screen.
Um, yeah.
There is where it says, I'm just not very familiar with the terminology here, so please bear with me. Um, so the, um, if you see where it says prop one story addition, that's the front part of the house where that faces the street. And then on the back of it, um, there's the patio and then there's a, where it says twenty four oh two. That's an addition that was done in the early two thousands.
Right.
So the addition that we're looking to get approved for is just that front part of the house, not that addition in the back.
Right, but I, I think I understand that, but your addition is just a second floor. You are not changing any footprint of the existing building.
Oh, correct. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. No, no, it's, it's quite fine. I'm just, I want to make sure that I'm reading that, that we are all reading the remarks correctly. Okay. Bob?
No comments. Really could not be more difficult with that.
Uh, or before I turn into public commentary?
No.
Yeah.
You're right.
Just because of the system.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. Um, anybody from the room on this? Other than Mr. Adler, who has already spoken, anybody online on this?
You have no hands raised online.
Okay. Want to even help me out there?
And I make vote for the first application of Atlantic Coast Engineering. Well, see, I'm behalf of the appliance, Israel Adler and Nicholas Sobel. Request special permitting in accordance of NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section P10 and 6, 10 of Citro zoning bylaw. Any other that the board may grant to add construction addition to previously non-conforming dwelling of four fourth Avenue. Per the plan of the Magic World Engineering LLC deed in December sixteenth, twenty twenty three, the board find that such raise in re, or such addition does not create any non-conformity except in testifying that this is not such a testification as not a testation or test.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
So Adler, good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So we will call the second application of Charles Shea, Eleventh Wellesley Road, Citro Mask. Department of Special Permit Finding in accordance with NGL 48, Section 6, and/or other relief to the board of field make grant to allow the raising reconstruction for pre-existing non-conforming decaf garage at eleven Wellesley Road, Citro Mask. Name and address for the record.
Thanks. Thank you. For the record, my name is Gregory Morse. I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering. Um, with us in the audience on this project tonight is the property owner, Charles Cameron Shea, uh, as well as the architect of the project, John Teriaki. We're here before the board seeking a special permit or finding in accordance with Mass General law, Chapter 48, Section 6, Section 8, 10.2 of the bylaw for the raising rebuild of a detached garage at eleven Wellesley Road. Picture here on the screen shows the existing property. The property is developed with an existing single-family home. That existing single-family home is non-compliant with respect to the front yard setback and side yard setback. It's also developed with a detached garage, which you'll see at the bottom right corner of the plan. Uh, that is non-conforming with respect to the rear yard setback. The lot itself is in the R3 zoning district. The lot itself complies with the frontage and area requirements. The proposal here is to take down both the garage and the house. We're going to construct a new house. The new house fully complies with zoning requirements. No relief is required for the house project. But what puts us before you is the garage. It will be a proposed one and a half story detached garage. Um, where the existing garage sits is two point nine feet from the rear lot line. The new garage would sit at a setback of eight point one feet from the rear lot line. The garage would comply with side yard setbacks. Uh, it's a one and a half story garage. The second, you know, the finished dormer level, uh, has approximately six hundred and seventy-two square feet finished attic space of the garage spaces. Submitted via email today to your department. There are two letters of support from the Butters. The project applicant reached out to the Butters. Um, the first one in fourteen Wellesley Road, I'll just read one sentence here. It says, "Your house plan reflects the appropriate architecture for this well-settled beachy location. I love your feeling of the home as a family place." Uh, the second one from nine Wellesley Road, statement from that, "I myself have no issues with any of these plans in any way and look forward to seeing your own." I'll submit hard copies of those for the record. I submitted them electronically earlier today. In addition, we would bring to the board's attention again that the new house that's being built corrects the two non-conformities that exist out there for the side and the front yard setback. There are detached garages in the neighborhood. Um, you'll see that there's a significant shed, uh, right on the rear block line of the Butters property to the south uh, with essentially a zero foot setback. We're bringing the building into further compliance at eight point one feet where it exists today at two point nine. I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Um, Bob? Commentary on this and is, is there an issue? Because, so let me ask you a question. The current garage is a one-story garage.
Right.
There is no other level.
That's correct.
All right, so it's a standard decaf that has its own setback issues, if you will. Uh, okay, and you're proposing a one and a half foot, in other words, a second floor of some sort in the R3 zoning district. Right? Correct. Okay. Um, does this? Why, explain to us why this, that garage should not have a twenty-foot setback?
So looking at the existing garage, the existing garage is at a two-point-nine-foot setback, even though it's a story, a single story would be required to have an eight-foot rear.
Okay.
So the existing building is non-conforming.
Correct.
The proposed building is non-conforming um, with respect to the rear yard setback. If it's one and a half stories, it would typically be required to be twenty feet.
Okay.
So to the extent that we're increasing a non-conformity, which the existing garage is non-conforming, we felt that this would not be substantially detrimental because it is further from the lot line. We are correcting two other non-conformities on the property as a whole.
Right.
So we looked at it with that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the house. And I'll, I will turn it over to Bob. I, I don't think anybody, obviously nobody has an issue with the house, right? Because it's, the, the question here is, um, is the garage as proposed appropriate for special permit? Uh, Bob, thoughts? And I will open it up to the board and then to the folks out there. But because of the nature of the change, right? That's, that's, I think, I, I am slightly wrestling with it. And I think other board members are, are wrestling with that issue, right? So, um, Bob, thoughts?
Yes, you have. It's somewhat apples and oranges in that you're taking one condition and, and changing it to a different condition with different setback requirements. Certainly, the existing condition was non-compliant and the new condition will be non-compliant, but for a different reason. Um, I assume the garage is less than, is greater than fifteen feet to the ridge because that's the other sort of threshold. Um, you know, I would have to leave it to the board after having said that. Uh, looking at the house, the only thing I'd like to kind of input is that I hope the final plan may be a couple of feet less close to the dividing line between the flood zone and zone X. Um, considering the situation that we've recently had at the other end of town. But that's basically up to the applicant at the time of application for the game. I didn't give him zone.
Right. Or thoughts?
So when he had the application, you have noted that, uh, you have finished second look. Uh, our definition of habitable attic space a definition of story is, uh, that part of a building between any floor and the next higher floor where, uh, that part of a building between any floor and the next higher floor is the definition of a story. Where a building is not divided into stories, uh, a story shall be considered fifteen, fifteen feet in height. Uh, for a story sixty percent above, a habitable attic constitutes a story for the purpose of this bylaw. This becomes a two-story build, not a half. So seeing that, we reserve that eight-foot setback for one-story accessory structures. This is now a full two-story structure. And I think because of that, you are creating a new non-conformity in that, you know, it's now a different type of building and it should meet that twenty-foot setback.
I, I think that's, I think that's where, I don't think Greg is arguing that if for this to be fully within the zoning setback requirements, it would otherwise have to be a twenty-foot setback, right? I think what he's saying is, he's, she's swapping to Bob's point. He's, he is swapping one non-conformity to a different non-conformity, right? It's not a new one. I'm just saying that that's his art, right? It's not a new one. Um, and that, um, you know, if that happens to be not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood because of the, the, the setback of the post setbacks, right? So, um, so I don't think, I don't think there's an argument as to how this is classified. I just want to make it clear. I, uh, but I, but the question is, do we accept that argument? Or is the fact that you're swapping one non-conformity for a different non-conformity? Right? Um, introducing a new non-conformity? And then is that new non-conformity? Uh, well, it's introducing new non-conformity, right? That makes it subject to variance, arguably subject to variance. Uh, or is this, or is this even arguably an intensification of, of the existing non-conformity? In which quarter could not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? We've heard from the neighbor, I'm just summarizing. We've heard from some of the neighbors that they're supportive of it. They don't think it's substantially better. So I think that's where we summarize where we are.
Um, I think the commentary from the neighbors has been, you know, that it's a nice house. Uh, the issue I have is that there have been other issues in town with two-story garages, uh, two-story buildings closer to the lot line than they, you know, than idea.
Right.
Uh, and having been a problem.
Yeah.
I think where this is going to be a two-story building with habitable space above, it shouldn't meet that twenty-foot setback requirement. Uh, it is, it's a tight neighborhood. Uh, but how, I don't see I don't see a reason why it shouldn't.
Greg, how did, yeah, I'm sorry. Greg, yeah, but.
What are some of the challenges that are created by having, uh, uh, non-conforming that way? So if it's not complete, what, what are some of the challenges?
I, it's the same challenge of putting a house there, right? Way too close to the property line. That's the whole, whole idea behind having setback requirements, right? It's one thing, it's a one-story building, right? A garage. Uh, and it's another thing, if it's a two or two and a half story building, where do you stop? Um, and, you know, and, and you know, can anybody convert any garage into entire building way too close to the, to the property? Um, so it's just, it's a question and, and I, and I think that's what we're wrestling with. Um, let me ask, and again, I don't know. How high, how high will this be? What will it be to the ridge? Uh, this being the, the post garage.
Sure. Um, you can ask the architect to chime in on that.
Well, absolutely.
You have to fill out, you know. Yeah, it's a fuck.
Yeah, and name and address for the record.
I'm sure, John Teriaki, Teriaki Architectural Design, um, twenty-five South Main Street, Polanski. Uh, the new building will be twenty-three and a half feet to the ridge.
Okay.
And then the, uh, so the new building will be about twenty feet. And, uh, just some quick renderings of what was a lot to forget about. And I think what, the way we're thinking about this was much like a house where a non-conforming one-story house, if it's modified with a special permit, it could be modified, and was not only amped vertically, and vertical is considered an extension of a non-conformity, not a new non-conformity. And we were hoping that this would be viewed in a similar manner, even though they're extremely vertically. Uh, we even see that as a new non-conformity, much like a house would have applied. So that was kind of, I think, the framework of it.
And I think we understand the house, right? And I, and I understand the logic. The question is, do we agree with that?
I think seeing the renderings, I said, I'm, I'm more, I'm more opposed to.
Right, because it looks like a house.
Yeah.
Right.
I want to see that.
Um, yeah, and, and I think, I mean, the reality is, it was there because it's a garage. Yeah, it didn't need those setback requirements. Uh, if there was nothing there and we had asked, you know, you had proposed a garage somewhere on the property, right? You are making decisions of where to put things on the property. Right? You're moving, you're going to raise and rebuild a house. New location. You're, you're, you're going to raise and rebuild a garage. New location. Right? It's for the back, it's this way, right? Um, I, you know, I, 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 I don't know. I don't know that that argument, although we appreciate it, right? Clear why, why you want to. Uh, I don't know that that argument is sufficiently convincing for the board. That being said, let's turn it on to public commentary. And we can circle back on discussion. So you guys sit right there. Anybody in the room on this property? You know? Okay, anybody online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. Uh, that, I repulse the public commentary. Oh, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Sorry.
Name and address for the record.
No, mine, Jeff Delisi, uh, Arberger Delisi Harris. I'm also a Citro resident. I, I just wanted to point out to the board that what I see being requested on this plan is no different than what I've ever seen requested in this town. In other words, if you were to take the position that going vertically in a non-conforming side yard setback is somehow creating a new non-conformity, that would run contrary to every single application I've seen in the last thirty years in this town. The issue, as I see it, is whether if there's an intensification of the pre-existing non-conforming setback, whether that intensification is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. Like, that's where I see this, but I just wanted to chime in because it's a substantial deviation
Yeah.
in usual that lie.
And, and, and I appreciate that. I would note that on the plan, the garage, which was, I assume this is north-south, east and west. Uh, but from, uh, which was originally, uh, one, it's not just the second story, right? So it's being moved. Uh, it's being moved off, um, the lower south, south property line. But it's actually being moved closer uh, to the eastern, to the right-hand property line, right? So it's going in one location from eleven point one feet to eight point one feet. So it's moving this way, right? In a, in a way where, um, you are effectively intensifying the non-conformity in a particular direction. You're relieving a non-conformity in one direction, but you are intensifying it in another direction. So it's not just a second floor on, on this, on the same.
Side yard. Yeah. The side yard setback is fully compliant at eight feet. It's eight point eight feet in the zone, right?
I understand that. I'm saying it's moving, oh, I'm sorry, it is compliant. I thought it was, I missed what it is compliant, it is however moving, right? It's moving.
In a compliant manner.
Uh, in a compliant, in a compliant manner for a garage, not a compliant manner for a two-story being, uh, building under six point one three, which says, uh, eight feet for one-story decaf accessory buildings, twenty feet for all other buildings, which includes one and a half and two-story buildings. So, and that's not in sort of dispute about what six point one three says. Um, but I do appreciate, uh, I do appreciate the, the lead. Um, okay. I'm sorry. Did I, oh, uh, because I was looking this way. Yes, stand up, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Judy Burn Ariel and I live directly across the street from the property that you're discussing.
Yes, ma'am.
I can tell you that when I open my eyes in the morning, whether that garage is on the left or the right, the property overall is going to be improved.
Thank you. And always.
May I have your address, please?
Help me.
May I have your address?
Fourteen Wellesley Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which one?
This one's a tough one. If the building weren't moving, where does that put us relative to the called set?
No.
If they, if they stay the same footprint or not?
That's right.
And I think to that point, I would rather see them move this further back and go on than continue to crowd this and go on. So that would be sort of, that's where my head.
Yeah. I mean, then you have a two-story building that is eight point one feet off one property line, but it's then eight. One foot, two other property line rather than a lot. So, I mean.
But still compliant.
In my, yeah.
Well, still compliant. It's compliant if it were a garage, to your point.
Side, side.
Side's compliant.
Side's compliant, yeah.
It may comply.
Right. But. Side's compliant.
So in order to make the garage compliant, it doesn't move forward, will it, the road?
Right, yes. Yeah, it would have to move forward, twelve feet, towards, towards Wellesley Road.
At that point, it wouldn't be heading.
Correct. Correct.
Could I just speak to that?
Yeah, please.
Moving it forward, you felt that the closer this building gets to the street, the bigger presence that it'll be on the street that actually is keeping its setback in a way works with the idea of not being substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. That's one point that was a consideration.
It also allows for a walkway from the garage to the address too.
No, I, I'm.
Oh, correct. It doesn't crowd the area next to the house. That's good.
What's the reason, I've shared before, entertaining coming here, architecturally talked around leaving it? What's the reason for relocating it?
Uh, we, we actually thought that you were creating a slight improvement by moving it further back from the set, your setback. We need more room. Garage is undersized. We're able to park two cars and fit a stair and go up to the second level without eating long garage spaces. It needed that extra depth.
Okay, understood. That's clear. So, if it, if I'm, if you go back, it's either they're going to do two stories, eight feet off the property line or two point nine feet off the property line, from what I'm understanding.
He's not proposing to, to do that.
Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't make that assumption.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, which is, again, whatever that is, that is.
Yeah.
Fully compliant.
Um, I think it's a much bigger building than what's there already. It's appears to be much bigger than the other accessory dwelling or accessory buildings that are in the neighborhood. There are larger houses in the neighborhood. Uh,
Yeah.
But I, but I, but I substantially more detrimental. I think one of the things, again, that I know I'll go back to is, you know, you, you know, one of the purposes of the zoning law, those two of them, a non-conformity.
Right.
This is, uh, just a large building that, you know, if, if their neighbor wanted to build this, uh, they wouldn't be allowed to do it at uh, eight feet. They would have to do it at twenty feet.
Right.
But because this is existing non-conforming, they're allowed to go to the neighbors. Uh, no, I think this needs to be at twenty feet because of the substantial size of the building.
Mr. Chen?
Sure.
We request a continuance till your June meeting so we can reevaluate this question.
I, I think that would be helpful.
Can I ask one question regarding, uh, when you say the building is too large, are there improvements we can make? Make the building smaller? We use the dormers for the bulk of the, that this could be better, you know, neighborhood? Or possibly improve the eight feet rear setback to walls, you know, or are, are there leeways with that? I'm just asking it.
Yeah. What I'm saying is, in your mind.
I don't have a negotiating mind. I negotiate.
Yeah. But they're, they're.
They have their plan.
Right. That's fair. I, I, I think you've heard, you've heard the issues that we're sort of wrestling, generally speaking. Uh, we look at all the plans so deeply. Uh, obviously, we've heard from us that we have no, uh, you, you don't need to earn it for that. The house, house is fine, right? The question is what to do with this garage? Um, and, you know, is it a remember, it, this, the, the issue that you've heard is if there's a second floor, right, then it's a twenty-foot rear setback, right? So. So, you know, and you, you may want to reevaluate the second floor or the position of the house or the work. That's, I think, in some way, right? But your request, uh, I move for, uh, continuance. All in favor?
I love it.
We will continue this.
What, they, you guys.
To, uh, to the June meeting, the regular scheduled June meeting. Um, I just thought of a matter of that. Thank you, John. Thank you. Very, I think, very good discussion. Um, the next application, um, which was the application of John Murray Neri, uh, care of Thomas McFarquhams and Karen Cerro Marshfield, who has done the permanent finding according to NGL forty-sixth, uh, section six and fifty-four seventy, uh, for sixteen Lighthouse Road, has been withdrawn. Um, so it's not been continued. It hasn't been drawn, so we will not hear any of that today. Uh, so we will call the fourth application, um, which is the Citrus Harbor Gas Club, eighty-four Jericho Road, Citrus, requesting special permanent finding according to NGL forty-eight seventy-six and section four seventy point six seven, eight point two Z of a Citrus bylaw and/or any other leave of the border field they grant to allow an addition to the instructor and non-conforming directive, uh, on addition to the full house. Uh, name and address for the record now. Adam Pollard, forty-one, St. Louis, ready?
Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse engineer.
All right, um. Are we here on the same plans?
Yes.
They, and we have had no change, um, and no.
No change at all.
No change at all, right?
Change at all of the plans, no.
Uh. Right, um. Where were we last time on this? Was this what you guys were calling both seconds, total reduction, uh, which is unconnect, is connected to the pool building, let me believe in the way you put it, is connected to the pool building. These are the, a connecting roof. Am I correct, right?
That, that is correct.
Um. We've had, we had public commentary of as we closed, uh, the public commentary at times. So I'm not gonna turn it on to the, uh, to the audience, uh, so to speak. Bob. Um, any additional thoughts on whether this is an addition? Or a restanding bill?
All I can go by is definitions that first has come up with some, and I guess I've come up with some that don't coincide necessarily, but two definitions I'm looking at are the one in the building code. An extension or an increasing floor area or height of a building or structure. So I guess this case would be, if you're arguing it is an addition, it would be pro-extension. Um. Certainly an extension, depending on how you, how you determine, perhaps an increase, perhaps not. Uh, the other one I looked at was Black's Law Dictionary. Addition implies physical contact, something added to another structure physically attached to or connected with building itself. Um. It doesn't say how that connection is made. I know in other cases that have come toward the board, in other cases that were issued building permits for as an example, a garage that was connected to the main house by a walk-through freeway is considered not as a tech garage, but but a connected garage.
Right, so, so that, so a garage that's only connected by a freeway has been considered a connected.
Has been considered an addition?
That's been considered one structure.
One structure.
As.
I'm, I'm just, I don't understand.
Right, right. No, built simultaneously, it wouldn't be an addition, but it would certainly be considered as one structure.
Correct.
Uh, and I believe we've done the same thing with duplexes. Duplexes are by regulation, uh, not two separate structures on one lot, which is an entirely different situation, but if you've got a lot with double the required area in the district, you're not allowed to build a duplex. And I believe there are duplexes in town that are connected in various ways, but not abutting each other as, as townhouses.
Right.
So again, that's a similar situation.
And it's considered a single structure.
That's considered a single structure.
Right. Um. That's helpful. Um, other thoughts from board members? I'm sure. What are your thoughts on whether you think it's a single structure?
Do we have any elevations?
I don't have any elevations of it at this point.
Is there like a roof overlay? When you say it's connected by?
Yeah.
That's where my head is going. You gotta, you know, strip existing, loop it back, tie it in.
So what I, what I did provide, although it wasn't updating the plans, I did provide a letter dated April tenth. That letter went through the zoning bylaw definition of what addition is, because at the last meeting, I was a little surprised it came up and I, I hadn't read it before. I did look at the zoning bylaw, which specifically says what to do in this case. Section two ten specifically says that if the definition isn't in the bylaw, you refer to the state building. And so my April tenth letter, I gave you a copy of the state building code. I also gave you a copy of the international building code. Uh, Mr. Vogel just reiterated essentially those two definitions, which differ significantly from the online definition that we were at the last meeting.
Right.
But also attached to my letter was attachment three, which is essentially a colored picture of the block plan that's up here. What I highlighted in red is one entire roof structure. So over the existing pool building.
Continuous base here.
One continuous structure, all one structure.
Correct.
What I highlighted in blue, while I think it's completely irrelevant, is what would be considered a common load-bearing wall.
Correct.
What's highlighted in blue supports the wall of the existing pool building as well as the roof of the expansion and the addition that were proposed.
Right.
We felt that, you know, this clearly depicted an addition per the definition in the bylaw, which is why we made the application that we did. Uh, and we're seeking the relief. If I can go through the relief again, if the board so desires.
Uh, yeah, let's hear it one more time. I have the. You know, I, I didn't, I didn't, but let's, but I don't think we got the, probably, it's completely unusual.
So the Yocup was seeking relief in accordance with section eighty ten point two of the bylaw as well as four seventy point six, which is the floodplain overlay uh, district to allow the addition to their pool building, the property being in the R three zoning district. The plot was established in nineteen forty. The campus is about two and a half acres in size. The lot itself certainly complies with all zoning requirements, lot area and frontage. Uh, the pool building, though, where it sits, does not comply with the front yard setback to Jericho Road. The front corner said two point seven feet off of Jericho Road. This addition that we were proposing, um, is a minimum setback of nine feet off of Jericho Road. So we're not increasing the non-conformity. Um, the addition complies with the rear yard, it complies with the side yard, it complies with the height requirements, it complies with all other aspects of the bylaw. The addition is essentially hidden behind a vinyl fence that runs the length of Jericho Road where the pool building. Landscaping that's in that place, shielded from public view largely. Uh. Now, typically when reviewing these, we've presented that additions are further back than existing conditions and that we don't create any non-conformities. That's certain in case of this application.
So, really, with respect, assuming this was a, uh, assuming it was a green-sammy structure, as far as setbacks are concerned, the only issue would be the front setback, which is already referred to be, uh, as proposed here. Um, which is at least ten feet, right, from my direction.
Nine feet.
Nine feet.
In the front. Oh. Yeah, I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the zoning chart. That's, that's, yeah, nine. Right. So, so, you know, so. Yeah, well, yes, I think the zoning chart is a little bit off, uh, which is all right, but we're looking at the two thirteen, twenty, twenty-four plan. Just like we're, right, nine feet to the storage locker, eleven point one to the, uh, to the corner, right? That, because I, I have a, a March fifteen zoning chart, which is supposedly forbidden. And then I have the plan, which is two thirteen, twenty-four.
Yes, the plan is two thirteen, twenty-four.
And that's what we're going by, right?
Correct.
So I will. I'm sorry, yeah, you're right. I follow this. Um. Okay. So. I made a mistake last time. All right, I think I can, like, put them together, okay. Uh, any, so we're not, uh, public commentary, uh. We still.
It's plain, brother, this was a, a non-conformity or a, it's just.
I, I think if this is, right, per the building code, right, and per the definitions, and I'm happy to be corrected, this is a single structure. Right, and it would be an existing non-conformity because, uh, Jericho Road, the nearest portion of the pool building to Jericho Road is two point one seven. And this would be the closest, uh. So, that's how I'm putting it together at this point, right? If this is a single structure, the non-conformity it is sharing is really that non-conformity. Right?
The side yard, which is non-conforming, would you say there's three non-conformities or there's two? If there were a non-conforming, that's a.
It's non-conforming. Why would you, if you're not going through the side, not conforming on the side? Uh.
So not three non, because could I, you said you're asking if it an additional non-conforming.
They're, they're creating a new part of the building.
Yeah.
Non-conforming to bylaw.
Also, I would, creating a new building, also non-conforming with regards to the front yard setback, also non-conforming similar to the existing building versus the side yard would be, in my, in my opinion, a second non-conforming setback. If there weren't, not a third, because you have two non-performing on the front, that, on the, on the front.
What's not conformable point of fact? The point of the building that's closest to the road or the fact that it's close to the road?
I would just, I don't know, it's a form of way of arguing.
So now you're creating a new point?
Right, okay.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, it's a new, it's, well. Okay, I understand what you're saying. It's a new point, but it is the, the front yard setback, right? You're not, the left side is not, not, not.
Is it an extension?
Or is it a new? Yes. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's the discussion.
Yeah, correct, that's, I get it.
Right, I mean, it's, it's a function of.
Right, a new way in?
It's false.
Me.
That's not this point.
It's a new non.
That's the question.
Any, it looks.
Okay.
That point is a variance of the point.
At, at that point, a variance is a five.
Right.
Creating a new one.
Right, if it is a new one, it's false.
That's right. I think, why? If you would put it on the other side, say, call it the, the backside of the house. Uh, the, the, the whole side, you know, if you just go front of the other side, that would be in full compliance to the new, to your goal.
Yes, you would be.
What do you got?
You're still going over the twenty percent decrease order.
Right, it wouldn't be a setback.
It, it's.
All right, without doing that now, yeah, the twenty percent.
This, this building that exists today.
Yeah.
Can we agree, it complies with the side yard setback. The side yard setback's three hundred something feet away.
Yeah.
It complies with the rear yard setback, one hundred and sixty-eight. The only non-conformity here is with, with respect to Jericho Road.
Right.
Building's at two point seven feet. That's the only non-conformity in this building.
Okay.
This addition that gets put on is an extension of this building. It's an addition to this building. This doesn't create a new non, what's the new non-conformity agreement? We're already, we're already non, the building is, the building is one building. It's already non-conforming with respect to the front yard setback.
Building as it exists is non-conforming. Now you're adding more non-conformity.
It's one building. You're not creating a new non-conformity.
So, so it's a question of whether it's, you're creating a non-conformity, right? Or you're intensifying an existing non-conformity, right? So I read this as an intensification of an existing non-conformity, right? That's how, how, how I'm looking at it in light of how, how the, I mean, this is just my opinion, right? Uh, the, how the building code reads, uh, as far as a building, right? It's a single structure. As far as the building code, right, this interpretation goes, it's, it's, I felt it was a single structure. It's a single structure, that's an intensification of an existing non-conformity, that non-conformity being, uh, the, the, uh, front yard setback. Right, that formularization of us. That's how, now, I am one person, but that's how I'm looking at it in light of these interpretations, right? We had some discussion last time about whether this is a separate structure, it's not a separate structure, right? The definitions seem to be it's one structure, okay?
Right. The building code, the building code is known to be.
Yes, absolutely.
Vague.
Absolutely.
For the purpose of interpretation. So he may interpret it one way, but I may interpret it another way. Again, both of those interpretations are valid depending on who's.
I understand.
Making that.
I understand. So, uh, I, in light of what we've heard on that and the fact our bylaws are not super specific on that issue. Um. You know, and the fact that in prior practice, uh, we have deemed those kinds of situations a single structure, right? Where there is some type of separation, whether kind of complying. Uh, I, I, I would deem this to be a single structure, and this would be, in my mind, an intensification of existing.
I agree with you.
Me, too.
But I'm one, I'm one of the voting members, not by any means everybody, so. Um. You guys tell me what you think, we'll take the appropriate vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I can speak for a moment.
You can always.
There's no. Um. The existing non-conformity is two point seven feet.
Correct.
In terms of setback or, would like to be thirty. The new proposed structure is nine and eleven point one feet back. Uh, it's. I don't know how you can call that an intensification. May, maybe, maybe you can, because now there's another piece of the building, which is within the thirty-foot setback. But in fact, there are several pieces of the building besides the one that's closest and are still within thirty-two foot setback.
It's just like the last part of the existing pool building.
Right, and, and other, uh, situations that have come before the board, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've allowed what could be considered truly an intensification of an existing non-conformity where a non-conforming structure is allowed to go even closer to the property line. So long as the initial structure was non-conforming in the first place. Um, and I'm also vague on this, but again, going back to the Gale decision, which has been discussed and which I think has been superseded, but I don't think has been completely obliterated.
Right.
All you really need to decide is whether or not this is. All you really need to decide is whether or not this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. If the answer to that is no, it's not. Then, uh, I think, you know, you can, you can okay it. That's. Again, my opinion, I'm not. On the board, I know vote.
Sure. Um.
On a. On a site. With so many. Nonconformities already. Uh. Everyone knows, uh, you know, what is, you know, to me, what would make this more substantial, we get to know. Obviously, there's no need to skip anything else. Additional. But increase in the share amount of nonconformities on already overdeveloped lot in the senior apartment area, uh, gives appearance that, you know. Uh, money, Apple, and yacht clubs get special treatment, uh, over other. Uh, private citizens. Uh, and again, it's even more of the already sparse green space on that lot. Increases, it increases a, a use that's not even related to the primary function. Of a marina. Uh. And I already mentioned. It looks like it would fit on the opposite side of that building. Without issue.
I think all those are very. And, and I think they're all very fair statement. Um. Any other comments here?
So it's a special permit, right?
It's a special permit, that's, that's a motion on a special permit.
Okay.
Uh, so special permit is applying, special, special permit, right? It's a special permit, so it's gotta be, it's gotta be through there, so, uh. It's gotta be unanimous, uh, doesn't sound like it's gonna be, but we'll take, take the vote, if you guys want to take, take the vote.
Respectfully, I've seen this zoning board approve. This exact scenario, whether it's a yacht club or a single family home. Hundreds of times over the last fifteen years. Additions to existing buildings that don't comply, that aren't creating any new nonconformities. And aren't any closer than the existing building. Hundreds of applications have gone through.
So, in response to that, and every time you say that, I'm gonna respond the same way. This is a new board. Fifteen years ago, I don't think any of us.
That's right.
You look like.
No.
Meaning that if in the opinion of this board, previous boards made a mistake, we can acknowledge those mistakes and move forward. Some people on this board may not agree with all the decisions of previous boards, and we are not compelled by previous decisions of other boards. In my opinion. That doesn't work for me. And I've stated my reasons. If it were a different board, they might vote differently. No, I'm not compelled to go along just because everybody did it for me.
Oh. Right, um. It's up to you. If he wants to pay a vote. It, it, I, really, I'm not, I'm not trying to please one, one, one or the other.
We'd like to request a continuing conservation meeting.
You got it. Right, uh.
Let me make, make motion to continue.
On their.
Uh, uh.
Great, one you want.
Did you, the tune, you ready?
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, we will call. Hold on. Alright, we will call, uh, the fifth application, we will continue from the one, two, three, four, five, four, five, four, nine, Frank Snow. Must be a bunch of the fourth turn of all realty costs. If you can follow him, he leads to a lot of the raising of the construction of the building, drawing once the fourth level, uh. The waiver to the John Bylaw, I can't fill out the construction instructions, the permit. The, uh, the zoning bylaws, of course, I don't think it's ever a lot of incremental improvement. Uh, and finally, you change the zoning bylaw for this, but it's a period of nonconform, uh, and big, nonconform bodies, not substantially more than the neighborhood. And, uh, would be ran. So we have closed the public commentary period on this, so that everybody, both online and here, knows, we will be taking, that was closed. Last meeting, we've taken no other public commentary. I will note. That a number of letters slash petitions came in since the last public commentary period. The focus of which, for the record, were, uh, focused on, uh, environmental issues and protecting the salt marsh. I will also note that if we do approve this here today. Okay, this project has to go to the conservation commission. And that those issues, to the extent people feel strongly about them. Can and should be brought to the con, con, conservation commission. They are outside of our purview. This is a zoning board. Right, not an environmental protection board. Okay? Alright, so on that note. Alright. Name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Galisi, remember Galisi in Paris, twenty eight New Driftway. I'm here with Frank Snow, my. Uh, client, who is the applicant today?
Gentlemen, um, can you? Give us a thirty second. Recap. Of this, uh, of this project.
Yeah, I can do it.
Uh, and we are, just to be clear, the. Well, that's those, uh, and the, um. Plan we're looking at is.
The other time.
Now. Yes, it's, um, it's the small plan, that's right.
Well, there was a revised plan that was committed prior to the last meeting. Right, I just wanted to make sure.
What's the date of that plan, so I'm making sure we have the right one.
Okay.
This is the old, it's the old.
So the revised plan, there's a stamp on it with, uh, a signature on the bottom right, and next to it is a date. The date is March fifteen twenty twenty four.
So. We're just getting on. Yeah, get our people working order. Does it, so we're all looking back to the exact. That's the thing.
Yeah.
Jeff, you're saying that?
Yeah, yeah.
This is two twenty. You said it. It's two twenty. This is the one dated two twenty twenty four. Okay, right?
Yeah, that's actually that's the way I see it.
No, 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 when there's a later one, three fifteen, you might think that's dated, that is two twenty.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Elizabeth is looking here.
That's what we're trying to get straight.
From that side, you know?
Is it a? Similarity?
Yeah, so the date. What you wanna be looking at is the bottom right hand corner and the signature of blue name.
Yeah.
It's overlooked.
I was looking to see if it's in the file, if it does not have a PDF.
Two twenty.
Right, two twenty.
No, but it's not gonna say March, no.
So say the, the, uh.
March, March fifteen.
Yeah, which, which maps to the, the, that was mistaken there, to the revised, uh, zon, zoning chart.
Yes, and really, the only difference is the. Is I, I believe, um. Correcting an error as to. Which step back is front and which is back, basically.
Alright. Okay. Uh. Yeah, we have a.
Did you speak to the revised zoning chart?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, following the submission of the package in February. Prior to the next hearing and after that submission. Two things were added to the file or file, and one. Was a revised zoning chart, and one was a revised.
Plan.
Plan.
Excellent.
Uh, we're just looking for it, yeah.
We, 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 we hear you, uh, we're not.
Do you have a copy of it in your folder by any chance?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, do we have a photo for us?
Yeah, I think I did.
You want to see what we're doing?
Bob, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause I don't have the revised.
Right, I don't, I don't have, that's right.
I don't have it in the file, I don't, that's something to be in email.
Oh, Frank, I thought, did you not submit that?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, okay. So I don't have it on paper, alright, and I have it on PDF, and I can send it to a printer or send it to whomever.
Elizabeth, if he sends it to you, can you put it up?
Uh, yeah, if you send it to my email right now.
Let's do that, because I want to, because we're all looking at the same thing.
Yeah, I don't have it in my file unless it was sent by email, I somehow missed it, but I. If I'm chance, I'll just put that.
Elizabeth, what do we have? Uh, who's your, do you know address?
Me, Ali. At CituteMA.co.
Which printer are you gonna send it to, Elizabeth?
Just gonna send it to my email, I should be able to open it up right from here.
Oh, I see, we're on the screen.
Yeah.
Right.
And then I'll run the papers around later.
Thank you.
I looked at it before I came out here, and I said, uh, I'm gonna travel light today.
Well, you see, it's what happens with continuance, that's right. Uh. Paperwork gets. I'm sorry. You can receive it.
Listen.
Excuse me, I'll give applause to, when it's a public meeting, is he submitting a new map tonight?
No, he has, he has submitted it, it was in the file, we just don't have it, uh, handily available.
Was it here before the public hearing?
Yes. It was, it was submitted on three fifteen one one four.
And was this plan that was shown during the public hearing?
I, I assume so. Uh, and if, and if it was, and if it was not, it's not substantially different. As I had said previously, I, we have received quite a bit of commentary on this. Uh, almost all of it related to the protection of wetlands. Not the province of this. Board, it is properly in front of the conservation commission, this will be going in front of, uh, assuming it's approved today. Um, and I encourage everyone that wants to speak on that issue to submit all. Whatever they want to submit and to speak at the conservation. Meeting, again, if this moves on.
Well, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I spoke, your my comments were related to the song, not to, not to that, okay?
I'm certain. We took all those into account. Or we will take all those into account, we heard all those. We, the, yeah.
Mrs. Jeff just began.
Oh, yeah.
Send, send, send.
Well, I don't need that.
You go to send, send flash, you see, might push it through, Elizabeth, to the way of the home tab there, uh. Update folder there, and up there.
Yeah, thank you.
There we go. Boy, there we go. Amazing, huh?
Yeah.
Technology, perfect. Alright.
Alright, just briefly, uh, the plan that you're looking at was, was filed prior to the, uh, opening of this public meeting. It didn't change the location of the building at all. It was just an error with respect to which side was called front and which was called rear. Um, just as the brief overview. Uh, this is not a preexisting nonconforming use, okay? Because we have a single family dwelling in a residential zone, which isn't allowed use. Um. The structure is currently preexisting and nonconforming with respect to two manners, one on the side yard. Where it is about seven point four feet, I think, of, of one of the sides. In a zone that requires eight feet. And then off of the front yard, uh, setback, which is about two feet in a zone that requires thirty feet. Right, so that's the existing house, in addition. The existing house or structure, I'm gonna call it a structure. Uh. Is a cinder block foundation, okay? Water comes up from the ocean to the extent that that occurs in this flood zone. It is displaced by the fact that there is a structure. Which prevents the water flowing from the ocean to the wetland behind the house. Now, one misconception, and I think that it was discussed at the last hearing. Is that this house or the structure is not located in a wetland. It's located adjacent to wetland. Um, I.
Do we agree that this is going to the conservation?
Yeah, of course, I asked it, look. What is being proposed is that the structure be removed. That a dwelling be erected. Substantially in the exact same footprint, but that it comply with all of the FEMA. And town guidelines with respect to. Uh, structures in a flood zone, meaning that water be allowed to pass through. So the foundation wall. Will be removed, which is currently a hazard in this particular zone, is hurt. And it will be replaced with, um, either violins or piers which allow water to flow through. Which is an attribute to the wetland. Um, what we have proposed to do is to. Entirely eliminate the side yard nonconformity on the reconstructed structure. And to move the front yard nonconformity from two feet. To, uh, ten, to ten feet. So to make it eight feet further from the frontage road than what it is now. So, um, we are proposing that the structure would meet all zoning requirements as to height. And the, uh, the particular relief that was sought was a special permit in the flood. Zone under section four seventy point, I think it's five F maybe. As well as, uh, a, uh, finding. Uh, of not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood compared to existing conditions. Uh, to change a preexisting nonconforming structure. We talked about the fact that there was a request. And a consideration potentially of the need for a waiver of the abandonment or four year provision. In the zoning bylaw, which we're all aware of. And, um. I personally don't think that it's even necessary to grant a waiver in order to. Allow this project to move forward, but should the board. Believe that this is a substantial structure that existed in April of twenty twenty two. And that it was either abandoned or not used for, for four years or more. The board has the authority to grant a waiver of the four year period. And.
The fresh book of twenty twenty two date was.
The twenty twenty two date was the date of the amendment of the bylaw which added the ability to waive it. Yeah.
So.
That wasn't your activity, Dave.
Yeah, so. It, it's a little bit complex, but in a certain sense, I believe, you know, we hit the criteria under four seventy, we hit the criteria under eight ten. Point two C. The real question is whether the board believes that this was abandoned or not used for four years or more, if so. Whether a waiver is appropriate in this circumstance, and. I provided the board with the timeline at the last meeting. Uh, starting in twenty seventeen, this, this house was built in about the year nineteen hundred. In about the year twenty seventeen, Mr. Valdez began to dismantle it. He received a letter from Mr. Vogel indicating that he needs a permit to do that. And a referral to the ZVA was made, at that time. Uh, the dismantling stopped, he filed a petition to the ZVA. The ZVA granted the permit, which is essentially what we're seeking here. And, uh, then. And, uh, then the house was listed on two separate occasions. And, uh, uh, then COVID hit, Mr. Valdez had a terminal illness and died. The matter was probated, and a few months after the probate was, was complete, uh, a purchase and sale agreement was executed with Mr. Snow, and we endeavored to do these plans. So that's kind of the timeline. I will note that the assessor, uh, has this as buildable and that it already has a sewer water connection on the property. Yeah, I do think that either way, with respect to the question of a waiver, I think it, I would like the board to consider whether they, whether the board wants to weigh in on whether a waiver would be appropriate in the event that the little appeal and
Right.
in order to where we met.
I think that's fair. Uh, so before we get to or find any piece of this, uh, I'm going to pull us, I think that's probably the most efficient way to do it, is or discuss it, is like, do we believe that this was in non-use or abandoned for four years, for more than four years, right, prior.
I don't have. Um. We had a date the last time this guy visited your office.
Yeah, twenty twenty, Christmas twenty twenty one.
Yes, it was December of twenty twenty one, and he died, I believe, in February twenty twenty two.
So, so there was activity of various sorts, right?
Yeah.
From twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, where we have, uh, the, uh, our, the list board's, uh, right, grant. Um, there was other activity, right? It was listed, uh, the building permit was pulled, pulled in twenty eighteen. Um, there was some activity in twenty twenty. He was talking to Mr. Delisi in twenty twenty one about what to do with the property. He died in twenty twenty two, went to probate, will sell, right, yeah.
But I think the last, the, the last thing changed the bylaw that twenty twenty one day was the last activity. I think that interim period of probating all that was, is one of the four years, shouldn't, you know, he, he might, he should address. You know, there's the activity between his last activity, his death, and the probate activity after.
So, so.
So I think he's.
It's where, right, so you're the opinion that it's well within the four year.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, are you of the opinion that it's within the four years? Gentlemen.
I am, and I think there's no abandonment here, because if there's been abandonment, we two factors, one, the intent to abandon
Right.
and two, voluntary conduct, which is for, for firms or negates what your intent was.
And, and.
Here, clearly, I think there's no, there's no intent to abandon.
And also had COVID to that time.
Right.
As a.
As whatever didn't happen.
Right.
Alright, so.
I, I, I appreciate the stroke ball, I just wanted to also reiterate the concept that if you're looking at what is nonconforming, and if the use is not nonconforming, it's the structure, and if we're looking at the structure nonconformity, the fact that the structure currently still exists is is, is essentially negates the whole abandonment and nonuse.
So we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this in two motions. I'm gonna make a motion that we move to find that there was no abandonment of the property. And that, uh.
No waiver.
Yeah, and no waiver of the four year period under section eight ten one is necessary.
I think we also need to find that there's a structure of the property.
And then we. And, right, and we find that there is a structure existing on the property. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of that?
I, no.
So that's, that's your answer. Um, then, on your special permit finding for the property, you want to make that motion?
On fifth application, Frank Arsenault, trucking, one sixty four Turner Road Realty Trust, one hundred and eighty five road situation. Seats all relief for razory construction of a building dwelling of one sixty four Turner Road. I have a waiver pursuant to zoning by law, seven six seven point one, to allow integration of structure or use to a special permit pursuant to zoning by law, four seventy point six, to allow substantial improvement to the existing structure, flood planning, water protection district. Three, a finding pursuant to total law sections eight ten point two C, that the razory construction of preexisting nonconforming dwelling, on preexisting nonconforming law, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Four, any of the week before, made grant, heard the plan of who scored on purchase.
Three, March?
Three fifteen twenty four.
This three fifteen point twenty four.
By. Uh, Lynn, uh, Michael Pignogwire, Land Service, Land Service Company LLC, Michael Pignogwire.
I second. Oh, wait, oh, I'm sorry, I never thought of that.
And then we find such razory build does not create a new nonconformity, so we accept and testify that it exists nonconformity. Such a testification is not substantially more detrimental to you than here.
I second, all in favor? Granted.
Thank you.
So Delisi, uh.
I'll take care of it.
Take, take care of, um, something short.
It's impossible for me.
I understand.
Yeah.
Hence the request, thank you.
Fifty is required.
Fifty is required, short, I think we can wait.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, we have. Do you have, do you have one thing you have before us?
Do you, there's more business tonight?
Yeah, I do, it's, it's just a request for an extension of a permit, we're still working on waiting for other boards to get access, right?
Yeah, so the, on, uh, so on the additional business, special permit for lot one, two, and five, Royal Water Drive, will fight for extension of the permit until July fifteen, twenty twenty six, pursuant to fight ten point five, C one D, of the town, uh, Citroen zoning by law. All in favor?
Aye. Thank, thank you all.
Yeah, that's, it's been a long, I appreciate that, a long process for you, I can keep going back and forth.
It is, it is a long one.
Alright, um, our final, uh, order of business was approval of the March, April.
April.
April meeting, so we're thinking for the March, right? So the approval of the April meeting minutes that were circulated, I need to quickly approve.
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion to adjourn meetings. All in favor?